Okay.
All right. Well, very good then. Tonight, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of the City of Vista. Our December 1st, 2020 meeting. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N 2920. The public may only view the meeting online and not in the council chambers. So the first item on our agenda is roll call. Mr. Conley?
Chairman Rossler?
Here.
Vice Chairman Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Looney appears to be having some technical difficulties. Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Hastings?
Here.
Commissioner Aguilera?
Here.
Very good. Thank you. The next item commissioners is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of November 17th. If there are no changes, can we hear a motion to approve?
Commissioner Garrettson moved to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Hastings, would you like to second? All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 17th meeting. Mr. Conley, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera?
Yes.
Very good. The minutes are approved and we'll move on to our next item, which is oral communications. This is a time that the commission sets aside for members of the public to address the commission on things that are not on our agenda. Mr. Conley, do we have anybody interested in speaking at oral communications?
Mr. Chairman, we only have one attendee tonight, and that's our applicant for the public hearing.
All right. So we will move along, move ahead to the public hearing. This is the Cedar Road Townhomes. Rancho Estates is the applicant. And Chris, I believe it's your staff report.
Hang on one second here.
Sure.
Looks like we have Mr. Looney back.
Right. Welcome, Don.
Chris, you're up. Thank you, John. Thank you, Chairman Rossler. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This item is a request for a mitigated negative declaration. Site development plan tentative subdivision map and condominium housing permit to develop 35 condominium residences at 206 Cedar Road, project P 19-0255. The proposal, as I mentioned, 35 units on a 1.85 acre site. It's located on the west side of Cedar Road, north of West Vista Way. The site is currently vacant, maintains a protected wetlands area at the rear of the property. Proposed site improvements include attached condominiums and five separate buildings, one access drive from Cedar Road to the project's central driveway and parking areas, perimeter landscaping, private decks and patios, and common area amenities. Next slide. This is the project site aerial view. It is on the city boundary on the western side where we are joined with Ocean Side. It's basically a lot from Cedar Road that goes over to the city boundary towards the left as shown. Surrounding zoning and general plan land use is consistent with the project site. It is zoned multifamily residential with a maximum of 21 dwelling units per acre, and the corresponding general plan designation is high density residential. Next slide, please. Project site is currently vacant except for a slab or a foundation that was there from a prior residential development. To the north, south, and east directions are apartment project multifamily land uses. To the west are single family residences in the Ocean Side jurisdiction. Next slide. This slide shows the site plan. The five buildings configured in a linear fashion throughout the project site with the central driveway. Buildings A, B, and C each have eight units. Building D has five units and a poolhouse, common area recreational room. And building E has six units. In total, there are 16 two-bedroom units and 19 three-bedroom units. I believe one of the units shows a den that will show up, I believe, in the floor plans. It might be considered a four-bedroom unit, but we'll talk about that in a little bit. Being that the project has 35 units, it does require two recreational amenities as a minimum in the city's design guidelines. Next slide. The site plan enlargements show the amenity areas. The primary amenity area has the pool and spa with a large deck area. To the left, there's a covered barbecue island outdoor kitchen, and adjacent to that is the recreational workout room, multipurpose room, basically. Adjacent to the pool on the left, there's also a fire pit and seating area, a tot lot to the right, which is counted as a separate amenity. And throughout the project site around the perimeter, there are also benches and common open space areas and a few separate barbecue islands that are included in part of the plan. An example of that is shown to the left of the slide where there's an open area between buildings A and B where there's some landscaping, a barbecue island, and in some of those areas in the open space, there are benches provided as well. Next slide, please. Project details include proposed density of 18 units per acre, whereas the maximum under the general plan and zoning is 21 units per acre. Two and three bedroom units range from 995 to 1,691 square feet. Units include private patios that range from 100 to 140 square feet in size for 19 of the units, and private balconies from 50 to 67 square feet in size for 16 of the units. Approximately 11,300 square feet of the site is landscaped. On-site sidewalks that go around the perimeter of the buildings will connect to a new public sidewalk that will be constructed along Cedar Road. Currently, there is a sidewalk on both sides of Cedar Road except for in the frontage of the project, so the project would be responsible for connecting the public sidewalks there and for the frontage improvements. As mentioned earlier, the amenities include the recreation room, pool and spa area, fire pit, tot lot, and various barbecue areas. Next slide. To cover the project parking, required parking for 16 two-bedroom units is two and a half guest spaces, two spaces and a half guest space, which totals 40 spaces. The 19 three-bedroom or more units, the code requirement is 2.5 spaces per unit plus half a guest space, which totals 57 spaces. Total required parking, 97 spaces. A few notes on the parking. For three or more bedrooms, there's the same parking requirement for multifamily dwelling units that are attached for sale. So whether it was three bedrooms or four, it would have the same requirement. Also, in the RM zone, each unit is required to have two spaces, which is one, at least one space in a covered garage or a carport, and one additional space that can be covered, a garage space or open. The remaining open parking spaces are available for resident and guest parking on an equal basis. Next slide, please. During early design review, some of the comments discussed were the need for additional details. The site plan has been revised, as well as the floor plans and architectural renderings have been revised. Additional features have been added to all four elevations of the building. There were comments received on potential additional bedroom areas, which I believe were originally shown as retreat areas adjacent to the master bedroom. They've since been labeled as sitting areas, and I believe ones also identified as a den. A condition of approval has been added to prevent these areas from being converted to bedroom spaces. Another comment received was the need for an amenity to serve children that would reside in the project. A tot lot with play equipment has been added to the plan, and a condition of approval is included for maintaining and keeping that a certain level of play equipment in place in the tot lot area. Another comment was to identify the sidewalk material, and they are concrete sidewalks. A cross-section added to the plans also shows building height relative to adjacent properties. There was a comment, a request to see some sort of a cross-section to see how the project fit in with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. This shows the architecture as it was presented at the early design review meeting. Next slide. This is the revised architecture. The colors chosen and roof materials shown at the top. It shows additional architectural details that the applicant has added after speaking with the planning commissioners. Next slide, please. This is showing a different building, buildings B and C, as well as the street elevation, which would be the east elevation of building C. Garage is obviously face the interior driveway, and the north elevation of building B and C's would face the adjacent property to the north. Next slide, please. I've included the floor plans for units A, I believe, and B and C, which are identical. Just to run quickly through building A, the basement or garage level is below grade, so it's counted as a basement, and there's basically tuck-under parking with stairways leading up to the living space floors. Next slide, please. This shows the ground floor, the main level that has the living area and kitchen, restroom, and stairway connecting to the bedrooms on the upper floor. Next slide, please. The upper floor showing the bedroom areas, closets, restrooms, master bedrooms, and so on. The next two slides, I believe, show the floor plan examples for buildings B and C. I don't need to cover those now, but we can come back to them as the commission discusses the project. Next slide, please. The special conditions that were added already to the conditions of approval were that the room areas identified in the floor plans as office spaces, retreat or sitting areas adjacent to the master bedrooms as shown in the specified units, and anywhere otherwise shown on the plan shall maintain an opening to the master bedroom or living room as shown on the floor plans, and shall be not, not be used or separated as an additional bedroom. Also, that the tot lot amenities shall be provided with and maintained at all times, a climbing gym, maze tunnel, rocking horses, Lego building block area, or equivalent play equipment as approved by the city planner. Next slide, please. A condition of approval that is recommended for inclusion would be that the trash and code closure shall be provided with a roof matching the residential buildings. Next slide, please. Under public policy, general plan conformance, the site is designated high density, which permits densities up to 21 dwelling units per acre. The project proposes 35 dwelling units on the site at a density of 18 units per acre, which conforms to the high-density land use designation. Also, the project has been designed to be compatible with the existing residential character of the surrounding area. The project, as analyzed in the staff report, meets or exceeds the minimum development standards and requirements specified in the RM 21 zone. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is for adoption of a resolution approving a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and report, reporting program for the Cedar Road Townhomes project, and adopting a resolution approving the site development plan tentative subdivision map, condominium housing permit to develop the 35 condominium residences and associated site improvements at 206 Cedar Road. Next slide, please. That concludes staff's presentation, and I believe we have Mr. Bill Gooden with us to answer any particular questions about the project.
So Mr. Gooden doesn't have a presentation?
He does not have a formal presentation.
All right. Very good then. We'll move along to questions by the commissioners. Commissioner Kramer, any questions of the applicant or staff?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, just a couple. Are these being built as condos, but the intention is to use them as rentals or individually sold?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Kramer. It's my understanding the units will be for sale. We don't have any indication that there would be a rental period, but we can ask the applicant to confirm that.
Okay. And understanding the parking, so if somebody moved into the two-bedroom and it happens to be two families, there could be three or four cars. So there's the tuck-under plus an open space, but the other additional cars would be parked on the street? Or is it fair game that they're going to park in any of the other open spaces within the 97 that are allotted?
Any residents will have to abide by the parking management plan that is put in place that will be made generally part of the CCNRs and would be reviewed by the city. For the units that have a one-car garage, they would be assigned a particular open parking space in addition to that one-car garage. Most of the units are provided, I believe it's with two-car garages. I'm trying to remember the exact number, but it's slipping my mind.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the parking management plan. That was going to be my next question. I have no other questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings, any questions of staff or the applicant?
As I was going through the RMD, I was caught by a statement. Let me see if I can find it. About, it was about the use of energy efficient things. That sounds terrible, doesn't it? On page 53, it says that the project may include the following sustainability measures, which include energy efficiency measures in its design. Solar, low water, blah, blah, blah. So I'm wondering if there are now a particular set of those efficiency measures that have been decided on. My feeling is that every new construction in Southern California should have solar. So I'd be happy to hear that there was solar planned.
I think you, Commissioner, solar has not been shown on the conceptual renderings. However,
I noticed that.
The project will go through a construction drawing submittal. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Conley, but I don't believe there's a requirement to install solar. I believe that would be at the developer's discretion at this point. Actually, no, they have in 2020, starting this year, you have to install solar on any new residential project, so that'll be a requirement in the building phase. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Graham, questions for staff or the applicant?
Just one for the applicant. Relatively speaking, it's a fairly small condo project, and I know there's set-asides as part of the, you know, the HOA, but I'm just wondering if the, the developer is confident that the, as time goes by, that this size of development will be able to maintain the pool area and the swimming pool in a high, high-quality manner? And maybe what thought went into deciding to have a pool on the size of a condo project?
Mr. Gooden, do you?
Needs to unmute.
So I've, I'm trying to get Mr. Gooden unmuted here, but I'm not sure he's able to do that.
Can you tell him it's bottom left?
Yeah. Bottom left screen, there's a microphone button that you have to click on, Bill, to speak. Looks like Chris is talking to him right now.
We'll wait for Chris.
Just popped up.
There you go.
There you go. Mr. Gooden, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Did you hear Commissioner Graham's question about maintenance cost of the pool?
I did, and then when the HOA documents are done, they'll be set aside for doing the pool. As to why I offered it, it's at that point where 35 is kind of a, kind of a cutoff. I agree. It's, 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 I think it'll be okay. I think they'll be, maintain the pool won't be that difficult because you'll have 35 different people paying into it, but I think the pool's a nice amenity. I think it's something that people with the pool and spa, some of the people will like. So I think it's, I think it's a good thing to have.
Okay. Commissioner Graham, were there any other questions for the applicant?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Garrettson, any questions?
Yeah, a few. This is either for Mr. Winters or for Mr. Goodwin. There's a solid wall to the north. What, what, what is the wall to the south and the west going to be? Especially the one over by the creek. What material is that going to be, and how high is it going to be?
What varies, but I'm looking at the gray plan right now. The area at the end of the parking lot, kind of where the dumps, the press is, that wall's only maybe, I did some sections, had to, I did some sections, I mean, I'm not sure if they're on your, on your list, but that was pretty short there. And then the wall on the, where the parking is, just to the west of building D, that one is probably be somewhere between three and four, four feet, but the, it'll, it'll be, it'll be raised and will be, will be above the, above the open space area there.
Okay. Just, just wanted to get a clarification on that. Also sidewalks, you can go from Cedar all the way to the western side of that and be on a sidewalk, correct?
Actually, both the north and south side have sidewalks. The south side is ADA compatible. It's, it's a 2% maximum cross slope, et cetera. So you can go all the way from the public, we're going to have to put a public sidewalk in along Cedar. You'll go all the way on the south side, you go all the way from the public sidewalk all the way to the pool, past the trash, and get into all the ADA units, even though the ADA parking is more in the center there. But people that are, you know, if they, if they want to use public transportation or whatever, they can, they can access it to the, the south sidewalk, which is what, building E has the ADA units in it. So the sidewalks on the south side would be accessing that, those as well as the common area.
Okay, thank you. That, that's my understanding and looking at the prints, but I want to clarify that because I did see several people in the unit next door on wheelchairs going down, and this would be a big plus for them, obviously, because of the sidewalk. And so those are the questions that I have at this point.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Looney, any questions for the applicant or staff?
I have a question for staff. Mr. Winters, you know, some of the floor plan areas have potential bedroom areas that can be improved upon, and you had mentioned in your presentation that there is a condition that they can't be converted to a bedroom. What kind of code enforcement does the city have in place to ensure this doesn't happen? Because if these are being sold as individual condos, if I buy one and I want another bedroom, I'm going to build it over a weekend. So basically, it's a non-conforming construction that really the city has no bite to their work, so to speak.
My recommendation would be if the planning commission wanted to ask the applicant to include that in the project CCNRs, so that it would become their responsibility, the HOA.
Okay. Okay. That'd be good. I think we may want to look at having that kind of writing or condition put into the approval if it goes this way.
May I say something? There's another choice, which originally the plans kind of came out this way. We, we can actually close that area off and make it only accessible for the master bedroom, and make that basically a master bed, you know, you'd have to go through the master bedroom to get to it. I think it's nice with, some of these two bedrooms are almost 1,400 square feet, so I think it's nice to have the extra, extra space, but I, I would, I, I don't know that I have a problem closing that off to the master bedroom and making it only accessible through the master. If that would make it, would that make you more comfortable, Don?
Yeah, I think that might be okay. There was one.
We opened up, well, the other project I brought through, we opened up the areas that were kind of those sitting areas and made them very, I mean, this thing's pretty open and spacious. We got openings from the master as well as from the hallways. There's a lot of, there's not many walls.
Yeah. No, I think particularly in building D.
Building D?
D, unit one, where we have a sitting area, that can very easily be partitioned off for a bedroom. And then also unit D5, where that dining room has been conveniently positioned where it could easily be a bedroom.
Well, we talked, I talked to plan about, about just opening that up. I, it probably should be open directly to the kitchen, and the, I mean, and the sitting room is, it's kind of a difficult thing because just, just because we have a, a room that's shaped differently than a big rectangular box, I mean, that, that's a perfect area for a TV or for kids to go, and it's directly off the living room. So I don't, I don't think it's a particularly good location for a bedroom to be right off the living room like that, but it's good for an office or it's good for, it's good for a, a TV room. But ones off the hallways, I, I understand your concern because it would be easier to make that a usable bedroom, but when you're right, right in the middle of the living room, I'm not sure that's a particularly great bedroom.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it's just something that I saw the plan that I wanted to bring up to the other commissioners, you know, for them to give it some consideration, but yeah, I think, I think removing a portion of the dining room wall in unit D5, I think would really help the layout of that unit as well.
I agree. It would make the dining room more, more usable without having to walk around the wall.
And it, it really doesn't change, well, with D5, Chris, if we go to a three-bedroom from a two, does that change parking?
Yes.
And so the same with unit D1, that would be a two-bedroom going to a three that changes parking. So it's just, again, I'm more concerned about the parking than I am the floor plan, just because we are so tight on the parking. So that's my only concern.
Don, when we did this, the first project I brought through, one of the things I think that you guys liked about it, which is that when you have these two-bedroom units, if you, if you, I don't know how many people live in two-bedroom units, but it sure is nice to have a place to go that's not in your living room or your kitchen to do something. So I'm trying to do that, but I, I understand your concern, but I think it's nice to have with 1,400 square meters, I think it's nice to have some other, other rooms other than the main, the main place, if that makes sense. Called a TV room. That, that's, I mean, that really is a perfect spot for a TV or a kid's room, but that one I can't wall off.
Bill, I just want to make one other comment. Thank you for hiring an architect.
You're welcome.
I just, I know we've, we've had some, I've had some challenges understanding the drawings, but it's, it's nice to be able to have a set of plans. I just, I know that we've, we've had some, I've had some challenges understanding the drawings, but it's, it's nice to be able to have a set of plans that are readable and understandable. I appreciate that.
Well, we, we put, after the, the meeting we had the other time, uh, that gentleman is gone and, um, I hired a new firm and it, it makes a difference because we put a, we put a lot of effort in this plan. A lot of the things we've done, a result of that meeting we had, you know, having the garages not all lined up in a row and talking to you about the roof articulation, things that I think helped the project better, make it better. So I, I don't have a problem going to a meeting as long as it, as long as it improves the project, you know what I'm saying?
And I think they're gonna be easier to, for you to sell too, because of these changes.
Yeah, I, not, no doubt about it. And I think, I, I think the architecture is gonna be an asset to the neighborhood and the city, because I think, I think it really looks good and.
All right. Commissioner Grimm, did you have an additional comment?
Just a, another little follow-up for Bill and then I'm not quite sure, uh, what the objection is to putting it in the CCNRs. I think that would shift, kind of shift enforcement, uh, or at least identification to the, the neighbors if they realize that there was something in the CCNR, somebody added a bedroom, and then it would likely come out of this, the homeowners association that somebody had an illegal bedroom. So I'm not sure what, what Bill's concern on.
No, I have no problem with that. I was just, as, as an additional thing, I said we could, if you, if there was a big concern, we could, we could close the, the ones off the hallway off and make them only accessible from the, uh, from the, uh, no, I'd, I'd rather leave them open because I think they, they add a nice touch, but I, I have no problem with the CCNR.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then Commissioner Aguilar, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Uh, yeah, so I, I like the idea of the no conversion. I think that would be a good addition to this project. Um, but I also had a concern about, I think it was Commissioner Kramer that brought up, uh, the for-sale. Is there any way we can make sure that this is a for-sale project only? I guess that's for staff.
No. Unfortunately, there's no way for us to make this a for-sale project only. It's, our zoning allows just a design review of the multifamily structure and components and, uh, you know, other improvements, but we can't control whether it's sold or rented under our current zoning.
All right, next question.
Could I add, could I add something?
Yeah.
With, with the cost of construction today and the cost of land today, um, I used to do rentals. I don't know how you could, I don't, I don't know how you can make a rental work today. I honestly don't. Um, if you built this thing two years ago, maybe, but right now it, uh, the housing prices are going up and I think this, this is gonna end up being a for-sale product because, um, as a rental, it really is a difficult financial thing to put together.
Yeah, probably some risk, more risk too. Okay, uh, I appreciate your feedback on that. Um, since you're speaking right now, how about the garages? This is just curiosity. I can't remember what the number is. I think it's sixty-six parking spaces and there's thirty-five units. How is that decided and, you know, who only gets one parking space, covered space, that is?
Commissioner, under the code requirement, each of the residential units will have to have at least one car space in a garage and one to open space. So every unit will have at least two assigned parking spaces where the garage are open. Uh, and the remaining spaces can be used by residents or guests under the code.
So there will be assigned those two units at least?
A minimum of two parking spaces, whether garage, a double garage or one garage space and an open space will be assigned.
Got it. But my question's really just, how does Bill decide that unit X gets one space and unit Y gets two spaces that are covered? Just wondering.
Well, th- this is, uh, this is a Rubik's Cube of a design. I, uh, so I'd like to say that I'm gonna give all the two bedrooms to, all the three bedrooms, uh, two cars, and that's the way most of them will work out, but sometimes one of the things we always try to strive for, which is kind of one of the things the planning commissioners have always liked is that you have direct garage access from your unit, uh, without having to go outside for security as well as rain, et cetera.
Right. That's always been the mayor's biggest thing.
What's that?
I said, that's always been the mayor's biggest concern.
Well, I think it's a good one. I think it, I think having, you know, if you're married and you have a wife or if you have girls is, uh, for kids, it's really nice to have the, 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 the access as well as the security. So, uh, we, we, I would assign as many of the three bedrooms, uh, the two-car garages, uh, if, if possible, all the three bedrooms will get two-car garages. Uh, I haven't really gone through the, the, that plan yet, but that'll be something we'll be doing once we, uh, get farther along.
And then there will be direct access then to the, at least.
Yeah, every, every, every unit has direct access to the garage.
Okay, very good. Okay, um, then one of my other questions in regards to garages, is there anything in the HOA CCNRs that says that, uh, you have to be able to park a vehicle in the garage?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Storage, in other words?
I believe I have that in the conditions of approval and I can verify quickly here.
Okay, I, I just didn't see that. If they're letting know.
It was, um.
What's that?
The parking management plan requires that, uh, the, uh, the garages be used for, uh, cars and not for storage.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe it gives the HOA, uh, the ability to check on it, if I remember correctly.
That's correct, Chairman Rossler, and I just confirmed the language is in there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, on that issue though, and John, maybe this is more directed to you. Legally, can't I convert one of, one of those garages to an ADU?
Our interpretation is that no, you cannot do that if it's required parking that was approved at the time of the site development plan approval. If there was additional covered parking beyond what was required by the code, then that's possibly converted or convertible to an ADU. But if it's required parking per the code at the time the project was approved, we've not allowed or been told by HCD that we have to allow conversion to an ADU for a multifamily project.
Okay. Okay, thanks. So this question is for Mr. Conley. Um, a couple of years back, we had discussed, uh, that bus stop there on Vista Way with you and, uh, Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Where are we with that? Because I see in, on page seven, it talks about, uh, projects within one half mile of either an existing major transit stop, uh, along an existing high-quality transit corridor should be presumed to cause less than significant transportation impact. And it does say before that that there's gonna be a eight-point-six percent increase in, uh, traffic on Cedar Road. But that traffic stop or that bus stop is not very accessible. There's not even a crosswalk anywhere in the area. So, and there's, it's very dangerous, actually. It's three feet, four feet maybe of space between, uh, the K-rail and the road. So they're not even a stop. This is just a sign. So where are we, where are we with that?
So I think you'll notice further down Vista Way, we have made some improvements where we've widened out, uh, the road and put in some sidewalk and bus, some bus stops, and we're trying to do that on a case-by-case basis as funding is available. Um, NCTD has been cooperating with us in terms of the plan check and the improvements, you know, accommodating them, but the city has to fund that. I don't think the Transit District is funding any improvements of the bus stops along West Vista Way at this point. So we're still pursuing them on a case-by-case basis. Um, this section of Cedar was not within the study area that we just looked at. It was just the areas east of Emerald. So you'll notice there's some improvements along that stretch, but this portion of Vista Way is the next one that we're gonna look at. We're gonna try to improve the drainages. We're gonna do some overlay. We're gonna try to improve the bus stops, but it's still work that needs to be funded. So it's a, it's an effort that's in progress.
Okay. Well, I just, I guess in the future, I would rather not see a statement like that made by staff when we know that something like that's not really a viable addition or any help to the traffic, I guess.
Oh, you mean the bus stop requirement? You mean the, the, the traffic?
I mean, just a statement there.
Yeah, that's, you, you just, that's a state requirement. I mean, we, we're kind of bound by what the state allows us.
Put that in the, uh, report?
Oh, you're talking about reducing the traffic because it's near a bus stop?
Yeah.
So.
It's loaded there, so.
Is that in the environmental analysis or in the staff report?
Staff report.
Okay. So the assumption is generally that there will be some patrons of the project that use the bus and that would reduce traffic, but I don't know to what extent that's actually gonna happen. We'll just have to see. Language comes from the environmental. Yeah. So the, the bottom line is though, I understand the concerns about the safety in the intersection and access to the bus stop, and I will definitely report back to the commission once I have a chance to talk to the city engineer.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, I just had a couple of follow-up questions then. Um, Mr. Gooden, uh, it, it appears that unit D four, uh, also has a, uh, has a room that's labeled as a den. Uh, has four walls, a door and a closet.
Uh, yeah, D four, oh, listen, I believe D four is the one that was a four-bedroom, but we just, instead of changing all the tabulations, we just changed the word to den because the parking requirements are the same. Is that, is that the D four one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That was, that's really a bedroom, but, uh, rather than changing all the words on the tabulations, the bedroom, and it's legal because the parking's the same for a three and four bedroom. So that with a den is the exact same thing as the fourth bedroom.
Okay, so you have counted that as a, as a three or a four-bedroom unit?
Uh, yes. It's really a four-bedroom unit, but I, we just called it a den because it didn't, the parking doesn't, doesn't, doesn't change the parking. Yes.
Okay. Then in building, also in building D, you've got three unassigned single, uh, garages. Do we know?
Right.
Do we know where those are, who's going to be?
As far as the parking, what, what will happen is, uh, the, the most, uh, the closest accessible unit to that, we'll, we'll get that as part of the, as part of the parking plan from, from, uh, from the building across the way, which would be, which would be building C. So
All right.
When we have extra parking in that, in that structure, um, we, we would take the most, as far as the parking plan, we'll take the most accessible unit to that, to that space and then assign it to them as an individual space.
All right. Um, then what happens to the freshwater marsh? I know, I noticed in the mitigation measures, you're re, gonna be required to go off-site and, and mitigate, uh, the impact to the, to the marsh, but, uh, there wasn't any landscaping plans for it, um, and who maintains it?
Well, actually, what, the way it is, is we have a fifty, okay, you have the, the center of the marsh and then you got the riparian, which is whatever plants are growing away from the center. And then another fifty feet beyond that, that's the line that you see on the plan. That's the fifty-foot upper line.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we can't go over that line. Uh, we're not, it's not our, I own the property, but I've heated it to basically through a, through an easement through the, uh, to the state. So we don't, uh, I mean, I, but this is probably John, John probably is, being environmental is probably a better answer to this, but we, we don't, we don't do anything with it. We, we, we stay out of that area. No, we have, I have to buy some mitigation land for some of the grassy lands on site, but off-site in that area there, um, I'm not supposed to touch it.
Okay. All right. Mr. Conley, are we concerned that nobody's gonna be doing maintenance on this little piece of property?
So maintenance obligations still fall on the ownership, uh, or the owners' association, whatever it may be. Maintenance for the most part is pretty passive in these areas. You have to collect trash. You have to remove dead vegetation. You have to allow for drainage to occur. That's about the extent of it, but those obligations will be put on the owner of the project.
Okay.
Or the owners' association.
And Mr. Rossler, uh, the, all of the water that goes into the basin has gone through one of the bio-basin filter areas. So no water goes directly into the basin from our site. It all goes down through one of the two bio-basins and they're all pumped together and eventually all the water goes from the last bio-basin into the riparian area there after it's been cleansed.
Sure. Okay. And then, uh, one last question for staff. I noticed that the level of service at Cedar and West was, West Vista Way, uh, is level of service F, but, uh, the delay from this project, uh, is less than two seconds, so it's, uh, it's not, uh, significant. What's the ultimate improvement at, uh, Cedar and West Vista Way, uh, gonna look like for traffic control?
Uh, according to the city's traffic engineer, um, that, uh, intersection is, uh, number eight on the city's signalization priority list. Um, it does meet the warrants for a signal, although this project did not have enough of an impact to bear that responsibility. Um, it is funded in large part by development impact fees that are raised from project developments such as this one. Uh, the timing, as John mentioned earlier, uh, for the bus stop, it depends on funding being available, so there's no exact timeframe. And I meant, a good estimate might be a three-to-seven-year timeframe for development of a signal there if the funding's available. The project itself will pay roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as part of the development impact fees that will go towards street and traffic signals.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chris. Um, that concludes my questions. Um, I agree with Commissioner Looney, Mr. Goodwin, that you've done a great job with the architecture. The, the elevations, uh, are much improved. And I like turning the, the garages inside into a courtyard so that they're not out on the main drive. So, um, we still need to run a public hearing. Uh, Commissioner Garrettson, question? Yeah, just one question more. Um, you've listed on a couple of the buildings what's called crawl space. Uh, who has access to that and who controls it and how big is it?
You know, that's, that's still a controversy between me and the architect. I think it should just be dirt. I mean, just soil, compacted soil with a slab on grade. He thinks it's cheaper to build, uh, a raised area there. I think it will probably end up filling that area in with, uh, with, uh, soil, compacting it and putting a slab over it because when he, he, he also does some engineering, but I, I just still can't believe it's cheaper to build that way than just build a standard slab there. So, uh, it's not really anything right now, but it, as I say, it'll probably be soil.
Okay, I'm just concerned that it would be storage or that it would be accessible or from the outside or that one could view it from the outside, but it doesn't sound like that's gonna be the case.
Well, it'd be a great storage area, but I don't think I want to spend the money to provide it. So it'd probably be just compacted soil.
All right, thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, this is a public hearing, so, uh, I will open the public hearing at this point. Mr. Conley, is there anyone, uh, wishing to speak tonight?
Uh, there's only one attendee here, Chairman. If that person would like to speak, you wanna raise your hand? So I'm not seeing anyone requesting to speak at this time.
All right, very good. Then I will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Kramer, any comments?
I like the improvements. Uh, it's much nicer project than what we saw, what, a year and a half ago. So I, I will be in favor of, um, um, this project going, passing along further.
Okay. Commissioner Hastings, any comments?
I, I like it too, and I like the fact that it is contributing more infill housing, which we know we really need here. That's it.
Very good. Commissioner Grimm?
Uh, yeah, um, ditto for me as well. I, um, I would like to see the condition that Mr., uh, uh, Winters just suggested on the HOA added, but that would be it. I, I'm totally in favor of the project.
All right. Um, Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, I like the project the way it is now too, especially since, um, Casita is, is a magnet school and these kids, most of them will not be going there. So having amenities and so forth would, you know, the way that.
So having amenities and so forth would, you know, the way that it, it is set up now is a big improvement. I think it, it speaks to maybe the fifty or a hundred students that will come out of this development. And I think those amenities have, uh, greatly enhanced based on what you've done now. So also the, uh, the park, the closest park is about a mile and a half away, Bub Williamson, I believe. So those amenities are gonna be very important to them. So anyway, I, I like what you've done. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Looney, any comments?
Um, again, it's a lot of improvements that they made, which is good. Appreciate that, Bill. Um, I did have a question for staff and it was a question that they needed to do some research on. And this, um, pertains to building number, uh, building A. And Bill, we got a corner of the building that's seven inches away from that fifty foot setback line. And I had asked staff to research what that buffer, uh, what kind of guidelines that buffer has established because we can't build that kind of structure without going into that buffer zone. Um, because you're gonna have some remedial grading, you're gonna have some footings. And so Chris, Patsy, did you find anything on that particular buffer zone? Does Bill have permission to encroach into that for his grading? And it, it, he doesn't have, you know, no structure can be allowed in there, but can he do grading within that buffer zone?
Uh, the intent of the code section is that that area would remain untouched.
Yeah, the code's very clear about no construction, no disturbance, as, as far as activities or grading or going in there, even if temporary nature for building like the footings of the retaining wall. But they're not supposed to be in there, in the buffer area.
There's also on the site plan, we show a sidewalk that has can, you know, it's not shown on the site plan, but it encroaches in that fifty foot step, that buffer setback. So um, Bill, I think that needs to be addressed because for construction and even that sidewalk that comes around that west end of the day, um, they're not gonna let you do any grading in that fifty foot setback. And right now, the way I can see it, um, there is some approachment for construction.
Yeah, I know the hearing's closed. May, may I address, uh, Dr. Don's comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we, per your, um, requ- uh, question yesterday, uh, I worked with the, uh, engineer and we'd redesigned this. We pulled the wall eight inches off and it, it doesn't, but then we're gonna do, I, I've done these before. I've done either a, a vertical footing or a permanent shoring wall, which when you're eight inches off, does not require any grading on the adjoining property. And, uh, what we do is you put the wall, you put the, the, the permanent shoring wall in first or the, or the vertical footing wall. Vertical footing's gotta be one and a half times the height of the wall, so it's quite deep. And then you come in and do your, your grading for your, for your structure. I, and I, when I heard your comment yesterday, um, I, uh, I, I think it's a, it's a good one. And so we went through and, uh, I was up till two thirty this morning with the, uh, art, the engineer, uh, redesign it. You, you probably don't have these drawings, but there's, there's cross sections and wall sections for every, every about six or seven sections through that area there. So we're gonna do a permanent shoring wall, um, or a vertical footing, kind of the same thing, um, just built differently. And then we go in and do the grading for the, um, the garages and the building, uh, after those are installed.
Yeah, that was on section A. I saw that. So we still have the issue of the sidewalk because that sidewalk is approaching in that buffer.
That was, what happened was we eliminate, okay, that, that's, that, you're right, but that, that's not correct. The, the, the site plan's correct. And what happens is we ended up, um, eliminating about four of those steps, including the one that went over the line and then put them at, and then, so that means that, that, that's, that, um, sidewalk bay, staircase will be a lot shorter and then put the four sidewalk, uh, four steps up at the top facing the front door. So what happens is we end up with nothing over the line and, uh, the closest, well, I got, I don't know, did you get the, the revised site planned, Don? Uh, probably not, but the closest that we come to the, um, the closest that the building comes to that wall is, is three and a half feet. And then the wall is eight inches off the, off the, um, the buffer line. So we will not go over the buffer line. In fact, we pulled the wall off the buffer line. So I, I think that was a good comment. We addressed it late last night.
The site plan that I have shows the building corner seven inches off that line. So I, I'm looking at an older site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it sounds, sounds like they've addressed it and, um, and understand the concern and staff's aware of what the issue is and, uh, they'll probably do it, take care of it under construction documents.
Yeah, I just, sometimes these environmentalists can get, um,
Yeah.
difficult. And I don't want Bill to get into trouble.
Yes.
I mean, that's just tens of thousands of dollars to fight those people. So I just want to make sure Bill handed in the right direction.
Very good. Commissioner Aguilera, any comments on the, on the project?
Yes. I think it's a nice project. Um, I was impressed with the architecture. I didn't get to see the first version of it, but, uh, it turned out very nice. I think the best part is the location. It's very close to the freeway, so easy freeway access. And I think that's part of, uh, what we're trying to accomplish with smart grow. So, um, I'm very supportive. And, uh, the only thing I would wanna see is the adding to the CCNRs, the no conversion of that, uh, fourth room or additional room.
Speaking of that, where are we with, uh, with the, the sitting areas? Do we want them to remain open? Or do we want them closed off and become part of the master bedroom?
I, personally, I think they should be open. I mean, I think it adds to the, uh, space. I think closing them off to the I think it's kinda weird to close them off to the master bedroom. I think it's gives more open space. If, yeah, we got kids, they can go in there. I, I think we just leave it to the HOA to enforce that. And neighbors, I think neighbors will enforce it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on, uh, on the master bedroom? Mr. Connolly?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that we do have one person on the line here who sent some comments into the commission uh, that were, I think, sent to you via email before the hearing. And, uh, that person may, may not know how to use the raise hand button, so I'm wondering if you wanna provide an opportunity to speak?
Sure. Uh, we'll open the public hearing back up and I'm trying to remember the lady's name and I can't.
Ms. Lucas.
Okay, would, would she?
Here's your opportunity.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I, I wanna tell you how thrilled I am. This is so much better than I expected and the response from the, um, developer has been beautiful. Let me tell you, I, I live with insight of this and I am so happy that this, this project is going in instead of the one that went in previously next door. So I want to thank you for your sensitivity and for everything you've done.
Very good. Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Lucas.
I'm surprised I'm here.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing again. And, uh, we're still, I'm still trying to work out what, what we wanna do with the, uh, the sitting area. Uh, have, uh, the CCNRs say that the, the homeowners association will monitor, uh, the sitting areas or additional bedrooms. How, how do we wanna do with that?
I think the plan was. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Charlie.
Raise your hand. Show me a hand.
Go ahead.
Let's go with Commissioner Grimm first and then Commissioner Hastings.
Hey.
Okay. I thought, I thought the way that, uh, uh, Mr. Winters laid that the condition out was, was a, a good one. What it does, it, it basically prohibits it, somebody from converting that to a bedroom within the CCNRs. So not only is it in the city documents, but it's in the CCNRs. That kind of informs all of the, the residents that that could be a problem. And, and, uh, as someone mentioned, that they, they'd be likely to, if, if it does become a problem, they'll likely call it out. So I think that condition is, uh, you know, similar to how Mr. Winters suggested would work fine.
Okay, alright. Commissioner Hastings?
Yeah, I was thinking about just the function of the room and does it help to call it a family room? Many, many houses have family rooms. I guess that's the, the TV room and um, if you functionally open it out to the rest of the house, then that removes a lot of the ability to turn it into a bedroom without some weekend construction, right, Don?
Alright, so it sounds like we want to, uh, leave, uh, the rooms open as sitting areas, family rooms, TV rooms, whatever Mr. Gooden wants to call them. And we will add Mr. Winters' condition that, uh, that it be placed in the CCNRs that it only be, that those areas be open and not, uh, converted to bedrooms. Commissioners agree with that?
Yes.
I, I'm seeing nodding of heads. Alright, uh, given that, uh, would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Grimm?
I'll move staff's, staff approval, uh, with the condition added by Mr. Winters regarding the, uh, that area in the bedroom.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Mr. Winters would like to, uh, address this.
Uh, thank you. Just that there's also the condition for the trash enclosure cover to match the building.
Right. That, uh, that was part of the staff report, so I, I assumed it was there. Commissioner Kramer, were you going to second?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, Mr. Connolly, would you call the roll, please?
Chairman Rosler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, Mr. Gooden, congratulations and we're looking forward to your, to your project. So.
Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hastings.
I think, I have a, a procedural question or a point of order. Did that motion cover both resolutions or do we have to?
Commissioner Grimm's, uh, move for staff recommendation, so it covers, covers everything.
Okay, thank you.
You're wel- you're welcome. Keep, keep track of us here. That's important. Alright, um, we'll move on then in our, in our meeting to reports or comments from commissioners. Any, any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have a question for staff. Uh, I guess this would be for future projects and what's coming down from the state, i.e. that many years ago where it was decided that twenty twenty all new housing gets solar. Um, what about going forward and saying that new housing is gonna have to have, uh, plugins for electric vehicles or in the case of condo sites, plugin stations? Do you see that coming down the pipe?
Think it's already here.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of sustainability measures that the state is pushing. Um, you, you have to plum projects now for, um, electric vehicle charging. And I believe starting next year, single-family homes will have a requirement and multifamilies, uh, not far on the horizon. The state legislature is constantly passing housing bills or proposing them and they're, uh, they're getting to be so voluminous that we're, um, you know, having to spend a lot of staff time watching what's going on and trying to make sure we're anticipating what's coming, but it's hard to track. The sustainability measures are definitely getting stricter. It's more in the building code side than the planning side. But, uh, yeah, the, on the building code side, we're starting to see a lot more requirements for water conservation, uh, energy conservation, um, you know, forms of drainage, rain capture, you name it, anything that will save water or energy is becoming a hot topic at the state level.
So that just increases your work, uh, two or threefold then to make sure that these new projects have all of the, this good stuff in it, correct?
Yeah, we're just trying to make sure we stay up with the requirements and that, you know, everyone gets treated fairly.
Okay, so for the project we had, have now, there is no intent, no requirement nor intention to put a charging station in for the thirty-five units or?
The building code will require that the garages be plumbed for it, but I don't believe it's a requirement of the developer unless he chooses to do so.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
On some of the projects in the county, they do require for me to put a charging outlet in the garage.
Oh.
Yeah.
So some jurisdictions have gone down that road for climate action purposes or other, you know, sustainability measures, but I don't believe it's a state requirement just yet.
Yeah, Carlsbad requires it, um, Salata Beach, Del Mar. Um, I know those would be.
Yeah, I would second John's response that it's usually climate action plan focused measures that go above and beyond with the current building code would require.
Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, um, probably a question for John. Uh, do you know if any of these, uh, new requirements that are coming down through the state? Um, are they gonna exempt affordable housing, um, for these requirements or have they? Or do we know? Or is that just increase the, the cost of affordable housing?
Um, that's a good question, Charlie. I think there are certain requirements that exempt affordable or that are, apply only to affordable, but, um, it's, it's all site specific. So the, the solar, for example, applies to everybody. It's not, there's no exemption for affordable. I'm not sure about the charging stations, but, you know, every, uh, legislative act, um, is different. So some of them include it and some of them don't. Most of the sustainability measures that we're seeing are not exclusive of affordable housing. They're inclusive of everything. The affordable requirements are more giving breaks to affordable projects like parking, you know, heights setbacks, those kinds of concessions or, uh, density allowances. That's really more what the state's going towards for affordable provisions.
Okay. Any other comments?
Uh, maybe John or for Patsy. Um, on the, there's a bicycle path that, uh, was recently built coming off of Mar Vista, going east towards, I think it's Woodland.
Yeah.
Um, I travel that frequently. And is there a landscape agreement with the contractor? Because, um, many of those plants are not getting watered. And they've replaced some of them plants, but I was just curious. It doesn't look like they're on a drip system, um, at all. And just, I see a lot of dead plants, um, in the ground.
This is a great issue to bring up to your county supervisor, Don, because that is a county stretch of the inland rail trail that was constructed by Sandag and handed over to the county. And it is highly likely that the county is not maintaining some of the improvements that Sandag put in to the extent that they should be. We're dealing with them on the same issue because the next stretch of that project will go from Mar Vista over to Civic Center. They're designing it and acquiring right of way now. And we're working with them on the maintenance agreements and what landscaping and other improvements would go in that area and who would be responsible for it. But for the most part, because one agency is building it and handing it over to another to maintain, not all of the maintaining cities are as excited about taking on another resource and putting, you know, money into maintaining it as we would like. So it's very possible the county's not maintaining it. I think Sanday has an agreement with the contractor to maintain it for a certain period of time. But I know that, uh, they were cutting those much shorter than what we normally require, which is like six months or a year.
Okay. Um, another question that might we laid again to Sandag. There is just a tremendous amount of litter on Highway seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Is that a state issue? Is it?
It's huge. It's becoming a huge issue everywhere and Caltrans is complaining that they're seeing more and more. Particularly during COVID, they've seen a lot. Our public works director is keenly aware of that. He's got a great relationship with the Caltrans, uh, maintenance folks. They've been putting in extra staff to try to go out and clean it up, but of course the city staff can't do that. It has to be Caltrans trained and, you know, um, uh, operated staff. So we're continuing to lodge our, you know, concerns to Caltrans and working with them to try to do more frequent cleanups. If you do see those or there's a particular location, um, or neighbors are complaining to you, whatever it may be, if you, please feel free to email me and then I'll report it to our public works folks and they'll work with Caltrans on it. That's the way we've been handling it so far.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, Mr. Connolly, uh, you're. Okay, Mr. Conley, uh, your report, please.
Uh, I don't have a lot, uh, tonight. I, we will have a meeting on the fifteenth of December for Patsy to present the Housing Element Draft Report. Um, and I think there's one other, uh, development project coming forward, so we'll have our regular meeting on the fifteenth, and then we'll have a nice holiday break. Uh, Paseo Santa Fe is close to being finished. Most of the improvements are in. I think I mentioned to you, we have an issue with the Walgreens property owner to acquire some right-of-way, so that roundabout at Palo Vista on the far south end is not completed yet, and we don't expect to have that done until probably close to the end of next year, because we'll have to go through an eminent domain process with the owner to acquire that. Otherwise, we've gotten all the right-of-way and made all the improvements along the entire stretch, and we'll probably wrap up the project before Christmas. There won't be any public ceremony because of the COVID issues, but we will have a video that we'll produce and put out for the public, and, um, I'll, I'll bring it forward to the commission as soon as that's done. That's all I have, unless Patsy has anything to add?
Nope.
All right. Very good. Uh, then if there's nothing more, we will stand adjourned until December fifteenth.
Yeah, another question. Is the Avvo Theater owned by the city?
Yes.
Okay.
The city is, the city is currently evaluating future use of the Avvo for other uses than, um, live theater. Uh, and it remains to be seen if they're gonna do anything different with it than what it is now. That's gonna have to come back to our city council for discussion, and when it does, I'll be sure to let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner, Commissioner Garrettson, did you have a, a comment? Nope? All right.
Uh, no, I, I just was trying to get your attention, 'cause Don had raised his hand.
Oh, yeah, okay. He's down in my corner, so I don't see it. All right, folks, I hope you had a great Thanksgiving, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you all on December fifteenth. So, good night.
Very good, thank you.
Merry Christmas.